If you'll give me your attention, we're glad you're here for our second meeting in March. And we'll begin our meeting as we usually do with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. And I have the pleasure of doing that tonight if you'd like to stand. Our Father, we want to thank you for the community we live in, the people we work with, and the people we serve. We ask you to give us guidance, help us make great decisions that can move our community forward. We also ask that, tonight especially, and all of the last month, that you stand with the people of... Sorry, I got a little emotional, but we have a country that's being attacked, that's a free country, for no reason. And we ask you to stand with those people and be with us as we try to support and help and make our community better. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve our agenda as submitted tonight?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to improve our agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have several people that would like to speak on our public participation portion of the program tonight. I'd like to remind you that when you come up, if you would give us your name, your address, and the subject matter that you'd like to speak about, and you would have three minutes, and we ask you to please respect that time, as several people would like to speak tonight. And the time will be kept on the screen so that you can be aware of it. We'll start tonight with my friend Larry Mara.
My name is Larry Mara, Sr. I live at 313 Delwood Drive here in the city of Rome, Georgia. And I'm here tonight, and I stand before you, voice my concern and my opinion in reference to the nomination of the new election supervisor for Floyd County. I am displeased. I am displeased with the Floyd County Board of Elections that they have nominated Mr. James Stevens to the position of Floyd County Election Supervisor. My displeasure is because it is well-known that Mr. Stevens has no qualification or experience as an election employee, let alone someone that will become supervisor of an office where everyone will have more experience than he. He is just not limited, he's just not wholly limited qualification, but he is non-qualified to manage an office that needs a highly qualified person as a supervisor. There's an employee who have been, who have 27 years of experience now working in this office that is more than qualified to become the election supervisor. She has already served this position as an interim supervisor for well over a year-plus. She was previously nominated by the election board to become a new election supervisor. However, you, the county commission, refused to accept the election board nomination, or her election board nomination, and then she became a political pawn that you, the county commission, used to create a new election board that favors all of you who are declared Republicans. As it was mentioned in a Washington Post News article, the Floyd County Commissioners got it. The previous election board in favor of one, and I might say, that was approved by the General, Georgia General Assembly, however, it favors the Republican Party. I now ask that you, as you have done so with the last nomination from the election board, refuse the nomination of who they have recommended, Mr. James Stevens, that you choose as the next, as the next election supervisor, Ms. Vanessa Waddell. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next is Jamie Palmer.
Good afternoon. How are y'all? I am just here, and I wanted to just come to this body and say thank you for your service. Thank you for actually being willing to sit up here and serve the people of this county. We respect you for what you do, and I wanted to commend you all who are coming through this without a, an opponent, and representing not only the Republican Party, but representing Floyd County as a whole. There has been some discommunication between the party in the past and this commission, and I wanted to just make sure that you all hear it from me first, that we want to make sure that we are as open and communicative as we can be with you all going forward. That's really general what I wanted to say. So, thank you all for your time, and I look forward to work with you.
Thank you, Jamie. Next is David Smith.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to address the new business number nine, that's the topic of paying the $23,000 to Dominion for this tech support. Like so many others in our community, I work six days a week and long hours to take care of my family, I love, because I love them. I love, my love for our country and our community is the reason that I've taken the time to dig into these election-related topics or irregularities so thoroughly for really the past 16 months. I've really dug into especially this Dominion, the topic of these Dominion machines, to understand to the best of my ability everything that's going on around us. It's hoped that the people that are put in charge of our elections, whose job it is to know and to understand everything about our elections, would take the time to look into any allegations of fraud or any potential vulnerabilities to the election system and equipment. It's never been my contention that anyone in Floyd County was knowingly involved in election fraud. Since the start, my case has been the lack of attention given to the fraud that occurred with the use of the illegal, unsecured Dominion machines that the evidence shows were built to control the outcome of the elections and that violates current Georgia law. It's an undisputed fact that election fraud occurred in other places in Georgia, enough to change the results in multiple races. We are told it was the most secure election in our history. The machines are not connected to the internet, but as more evidence comes out, less Americans believe that every day. In the previous 16 months, many citizens of Floyd County have came here in good faith and expressed our evidence-based concerns that our votes are not secure on the Dominion system. We were promised a peer review would look into some of these questions, but haven't received any updates on that. I can send you documentation of anything that I've spoken about, whether tonight or any time in the past, that proves the allegations I'm making. The numbers just don't add up. We're at a crossroads in our country. Either the American people will be the ones who choose their leaders, or, like in the 2020 election, they will be chosen for us by this Dominion system, and we will be a banana republic. Because of the way the election law is written in Georgia, the counties don't have the say-so that they do in most other states to choose the election equipment that we use. I know in Nevada, I think it was last week, a few county commissions voted to get rid of the Dominion system altogether and to go back to paper ballots. Now, it's complicated here because of the way the law is written, and I understand that. But to just go along here with this, we know there are problems with the Dominion system, and to now pay them for technical support when we don't have to, like the option is in the contract, that we don't have to use Dominion for that. We can hire outside, the county can hire someone from outside, a, an IT professional or whatever cybersecurity people to do that without going through Dominion. So, if we're going to be forced to use the Dominion machine in light of all the evidence that's out there, then we should at least not be paying them $23,000 for technical support, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Cheryl Garner.
I hope the mic is, is right. I'm just coming, I'm Cheryl Garner, Hearthstone Drive, Rome, Georgia. I'm just coming because I've attended several of the meetings that the, listened to the awful, you know, I felt like the election, the three-person election board was vilified in public many times without substantiation, as well as Vanessa Waddell. And I'm concerned about us going into the next election so soon with so many people that are totally inexperienced on the elections board and the, especially the election supervisor. I'm sure Mr. Stevens is a fine individual, and he was a good city manager, but he has absolutely no experience in the highly specialized protocol involved in election, election board matters. I agree with Mr. Mara that Ms. Waddell was overlooked, she had the proper training, she had years of experience, several speakers who had worked with her for years during the elections, and one of them is sitting in the audience tonight, I know for sure, attest to her good character, and she has been treated horribly, as many of you who have read the Washington Post article, I'm sure, are aware. So, just to reiterate, I'm, I'm very concerned about the primary, how it will go, and also the forthcoming election, given the amount of inexperience this new elections board and the supervisor has. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Last is Daniel Eason.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Eason, I live at 11 Robin Street Northwest. I'm here tonight to stand in support of Vanessa Waddell. I've worked with Vanessa as a volunteer in the elections office for a couple of years now. I've attended all the elections board meetings, and I've sat in many meetings where allegations have been made about the board, about the office. And to clear that up, I also attend all the state elections board meetings via Zoom. And if you haven't ever attended one of those, there, it's hard to stay awake, but you hear countless allegations against boards, against voters, against officials. The one, the one that has come before the SEB most recently, with the exception of Mr. Brady's case, Virginia will remember this, there was an allegation of several improprieties with ballot drop box pickups, which, as a volunteer, I attended to every day that we did those pickups, so I was involved. The allegations included that the paperwork wasn't done right, that there were problems with transportation, who handled those ballots. Well, those finally did make it to the SEB for investigation, and I don't think it's been made public, publicly known here yet in this county, that those allegations, it's extremely rare for allegations to go before the board after being investigated, that they're dismissed outright. Almost never, never happens. Either there's going to be a referral to the Attorney General's Office, or, and/or to the prosecutor of the, of the local jurisdiction, or a letter of instruction from the board to the persons who, parties who might have made mistakes. That didn't happen. With the allegations, and these allegations are the only allegations that I'm, that I'm aware of that have come before the SEB involving the period that Vanessa Waddell has acted as interim clerk, chief clerk, those were dismissed outright. They found nothing in violation. And I can tell you as a volunteer, that happened because of Vanessa Waddell. She trained us, and she trained us well. And today, I understand that she is, I believe in Savannah, at a conference, getting recurrent training and new training. So Vanessa's doing a great job. I don't understand why we would, we would pass over Vanessa and not support her. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. We always appreciate public comments, and we're glad that we're able to, to allow that in our meetings before we start. We'll ask, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes of our last meeting on March the 8th stand approved as submitted. We have no special recognitions tonight, we all, but we do have one special, very special presentation, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Wallace if she'll go up to the microphone and, and I'll ask Joyce Perdue if she'll come forward.
Such an honor to be here with you, Joyce, so thank you for all you're doing. This is a proclamation from Floyd County, whereas Floyd County Board of Commissioners recognized the sincere effort and dedication of those committed to the Fairview School Restoration Project. Whereas the Fairview School in Cave Spring is one of the few remaining Rosenwald Schools in Georgia constructed explicitly for the education of African-American children during the Jim Crow era. And whereas, after its closure in 1955, years of neglect and deterioration, alumni discovered the campus underneath a sea of kudzu, and the first-grade building was the sole remaining structure. Whereas, the Fairview School was placed on the Georgia Trust Places Imperial List in 2011 and National Registry for Historic Places in 2017. And whereas, in 2015, Governor Nathan Dill and First Lady Sandra Dill awarded Fairview School a Governor's Award for the Arts and Humanities at the Capitol in Atlanta. And whereas, the Fairview School's new mission is to serve all 21st-century children and instill, instill in them the value of education and the basic virtues and skills of a civil society, thus protruding into legacy to advance all children. And whereas, along with several generous donors, including Wes Walraven, funding from local, state, and national grants, fundraising events supported by three communities, Cave Spring, Floyd County, City of Rome, and countless volunteers, the first-grade building was preserved. And whereas, the Appalachian Regional Commission, a regional economic development agency that presents a unique partnership of federal, state, and local governments, did award $51,000 grant to fund the Fairview School Master Plan. Now therefore, on behalf of the Floyd County Commission, we do hereby recognize the Fairview Board of Directors, the alumni, the advisory committees, for their tremendous effort in Fairview School project to preserve this significant historical site, in witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and have caught, and have caused the seal of the county, of Floyd County, Georgia, to be afflicted on the 22nd day of March 2022. And it's signed by our current chair, Wright Bagby.
You all just don't know what a great day this is in the life of the Fairview School. What a great, great day it is in the life of the Fairview School. When I walked into the room, I saw so many people who've been affiliated with us somewhere along these last 12, 13 years, and it's just amazing the support that we have gotten. We cannot tell you enough how much we appreciate those. But first of all, the two members with me tonight, I would like for them to stand, please. That was Tom Dashar, who's newly appointed to our Board of Directors, and Eddie Hood, who is the alumni president. So if y'all would just stand while I finish speaking, please. I kind of struggled with what I was going to talk about today, but I thought I'd just give you a piece of my heart and a piece of some of what has happened throughout this project. Well, first of all, and see the timer's not on, so y'all watch to keep, keep track of me. But you all may not know, but I grew up in the city of Cave Spring. When I graduated from high school, I wanted to go a long way from home. So when I left home, I went to Missouri, state of Missouri, finished Stevens College there, married a guy, we lived in the Midwest for many years, and then I came back to the Rome, to the Atlanta area divorced. Raised my children in Atlanta. When my dad, Eugene Perdue, became ill, I came back to the area, and when I came back, I was just so thrilled with being home after I had wanted to go 40 years ago as far away as I could. But it turned out that this has just been a wonderful community for us, because when I came back, I started to research my dad's history, and in so doing, things just sort, sort of just kind of came together. I became interested in where he taught and that sort of thing, and it wound up that he had worked for the Floyd County Board of Education down in the city of Cave Spring. So, okay, so things just kind of happened. Things just kind of happened. And in the terms of a local, a current song now, I think the writer says, "It was just meant to be." So, I started researching, went to Cave Spring, and guess what was meant to be? The alumni knew that the school was still there, it had been hidden under kudzu for almost 60 years, and had just been neglected, and was only a quarter of a mile out of Cave Spring. The next thing that was just meant to be is that I didn't know what we had found, we just had a school and that sort of thing, but somehow, somewhere, a friend told me, "Oh, you should, you know, check out the Department of Natural Resources in, in Atlanta." So in doing so, I spoke to this lady, and she says, "Oh, I know where Cave Spring is. Oh, yeah, please, come up to Cave Spring." And through conversation with her, it turned out, well, she was looking for these schools called Rosenwald Schools, which was a big thing back during that period of time, they had been funded by Julius Rosenwald, who's a wealthy man, owner of Sears &amp; Roebuck, blah, 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 blah. Y'all know the story from the newspaper. Anyway, she, we continued to talk, and I didn't know about a Rosenwald School, but it turned out that the very school that she was looking for was the school we had found. But tell me that wasn't just meant to be. Then after that, we started to do some research and that sort of stuff, and people began to support us in the area, and everybody, the whole community came together. We've been able to restore the school, and then on top of that, the most recent revelation that we got, piece of money that we got, was to fund our master plan, which will give us the opportunity then to expand our process so that we can have a campus for children again. We are so pleased to be at that point, and I'd like to thank everybody in the community for making this happen. So again, it was just meant to be. Thank you, guys.
If we, if we all had an advocate like Joyce and her group to take on what seemed like an impossible task, we could accomplish great things, and we appreciate you very much. I skipped over one extremely important item, although 2021 in many ways was a year we'd like to skip. We, we want to have a presentation of our annual report from our manager, Jamie McCord. Tonight, we're very proud of what we were able to accomplish in 2021 and, and what we were able to do in very difficult times. So, Jamie, I'll turn this over to you.
To keep it timely, we've actually recorded it on video, and Hollis is about to start it. Y'all should see it here, and we'll see it there.
Hello, I'm Jamie McCord, Floyd County Manager, and I would like to take this opportunity to discuss some of the highlights of our 2021 Annual Report. 2021 continued to be a struggle with COVID and operating normally. Our 2021 budget has shown some growth, and staff continues to manage within their respective departments. I am extremely proud of our management team and department heads in managing county business this past year. With the retirement of Assistant County Manager Gary Burkalter, we began 2021 with a new division structure. Suzie Gass was promoted to Administrative Services Division Director, John Blaylock to Public Safety Division Director, Bruce Ivy to Public Utilities and Transportation Director, and Aaron Elrod promoted to Community Services Division Director. This change was very successful in year one, in giving department heads and management team a much more manageable span of control, allowing me to focus on joint operations and commission directives. With some of these changes, Floyd County 911 hired a new director in 2021. Summer Robinson, who has 22 years of service with Floyd County, and Victoria Henson was also hired as the Assistant Director, bringing seven years of service and splitting time between 911 and EMA operations. Let's move into some departmental highlights for 2021.
Hi, I'm John Carroll, Airport Manager. In 2021, the airport's drive-through security gates were upgraded, as well as a new gate installed on the northwest side of the airport. We have also installed a number of new security cameras around the gates and terminal areas. In October, the Wings Over North Georgia Air Show was highlighted by the U.S. Navy Blue Angels. Although we had a bit of rain Saturday, the turnout was packed, and it was a great show. Sunday was even better, and the Blue Angels rocked over Floyd County. 2021 also saw the beginning of construction for the Runway 119 extension. This part of the construction was mostly site work for grading and drainage. When complete, the runway will have grown from 6,006 feet to 7,010, potentially drawing in a greater number of aircraft.
In 2021, we launched a brand-new website, which allows for ease of access, updated technology, and better mobile experience. This incorporated an updated employee portal also named the County Connect. Floyd County implemented the Denver Peak Academy Program in 2020, and welcomed and trained 52 employees in 2021. The Peak Academy trains employees at all levels on the principles of lean, which teaches how to eliminate waste, improve efficiency, and ultimately create a higher standard of government work product. In 2021, we held three peak sessions where employees learned techniques and strategies implementing peak performance throughout their departments. These employees took a personal investment in the county's continuous organizational growth and process improvement, completing 16 A3 projects. Over the course of 2021, the Rome Floyd Development Authority launched their new website, established a social media presence, and coordinated their first community engagement social media campaign, and added a project coordinator to the team. They were also recognized as a top 10 metro area for economic development, and held the first joint strategic planning session. These investments created 214 jobs and announced over 162 million in investments. Expansion and new construction included Sunrise Manufacturing, Integrated Fiber, Georgia Pacific, Hillman Group and Big Time Products, Ball Corporation, VT Industries, Southeast Solar, and Summit Hill Foods. In 2021, the decision was made to move Elections and Voter Registration Office to shared space at the Floyd County Health Department. This allows for significantly more space for election staff, better access and parking for both early voting and registration. It also allows for a better citizen experience for full transparency during the elections and registration process. Emergency management continued to monitor COVID in 2021, coordinating drive-through testing at the Coosa Valley Fairgrounds. The Hazard Mitigation Plan was updated, submitted, and approved by both GMA and FEMA. The Rome Floyd Fire Department saw major accomplishments, including completion of the new burn building at their training complex on North Avenue. This new building will allow live-fire exercises for firefighters to train and learn new techniques in fire suppression operations. For the first time in many years, the Fire Department became fully staffed, and with the new pay plan, were able to attract previously certified fully staffed, and with the new pay plan, were able to attract previously certified firefighters as part of their process. The IT Department was instrumental in setting up virtual courtrooms for Superior Court at the jail, limiting the number of inmate transport significantly. Efforts on cybersecurity continue to be a priority with updated firewalls and email filtering to improve security in all locations. The Rome Floyd Land Bank had another successful year in 2021 despite the ongoing pandemic. They continue to have a variety of properties purchased each year. These are overgrown vacant lots, wooded lots, and blighted houses adjacent to properties and acreage. The majority of the properties processed through the land bank are returned back to the tax rolls and put into a productive use. They are looking forward to expanding their operations in 2022. Rome Floyd Parks and Recreation planted 17 trees at Etowah Park in 2021 with their partnership with International Paper. With assistance from the Floyd County Prison, trees from Ridgeway Park were repurposed into new picnic tables and two shelters installed at Brushy Branch. A new playground was also installed at Eagle Park, and new logos were placed at 23 existing park signs throughout the system. Staff assisted with the installation of poles and nets at the Etowah Driving Range. An agility equipment at the Dog Park was also installed. The septic system was repaired at the Lock and Down Bath House, and all campsites were upgraded as well. In October of 2021, Paul's was one of 15 chosen from thousands of groups across the state to represent at the Annual Pet Adoption Day and Georgia Grown Festival. This event, hosted by First Lady Marty Kemp at the Governor's Mansion, helped bring several into our shelter and resulted in many new rescue partners for Paul's. Paul's also gained about 30 rescue partners in 2021, many in the northeast part of the country. They assisted with a very special animal transport by plane at our own Russell Regional Airport. 2,230 animals were rescued through the combined efforts of our rescue partners and adoptions. And we ended the year with a 97.19 live outcome. Paul's partnered with the Floyd County Sheriff's Office to create a cruelty task force between the two agencies. The sheriff's deputies joined animal control officers to become certified and trained in animal cruelty investigations. Since the partnership in August, their combined efforts have resulted in 17 felony arrests for a total of 162 felony aggravated cruelty charges, 69 state-level misdemeanor charges, and four cases currently under investigation with charges forthcoming. In 2021, the Planning Department began working on an update to the Unified Land Development Code. After 20 years, the document was due for a revamp. They completed and adopted the MTP, or Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and also the Five-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. The Governor's Office of Highway Safety awarded a HEAT grant to Floyd County Police Department to help us mitigate crashes and fatalities in our area. The grant pays for three new equipped vehicles, as well as salary and fuel reimbursement. We were unfortunately eligible for the grant due to the significant increase in traffic fatalities over the past several years. 2021 fatalities equaled the combined total of 2019 and 2020. Canine Barrow joined the police family. The two-year-old Malinois Shepherd mix was trained at Southern Coast Canine in Florida, thanks to a $21,000 donation from a private citizen. Barrow was trained in detection of narcotics, tracking, and apprehension at no cost to the county. To date, he has seized more than $225,000 in contraband. Officer Blake Puckett was presented the Life Saving Award and Officer of the Year for rescuing a woman from a fiery crash on Georgia 53 after her vehicle was struck head-on by a DUI driver.
Hello, I'm Bruce Ivy, Floyd County's Public Utilities and Transportation Division Director. In 2021, we completed a reorganization in Public Works that involved creation of two new positions to improve our efficiency and provide better value to our citizens. In November, Ben Brooks started as the new Assistant Public Works Director. Ben's previous experience will be a valuable asset to our roadway maintenance program. In Public Works, the Chubb Road Project received GDOT funding for construction, and we are currently working to acquire a right-of-way. The Hall Road Relocation Project was approved and will be funded and managed by GDOT. Existing county right-of-way will be used, and design is underway with construction planned in 2023. This will provide improved access to this area. The Redmond Trail is a popular project that was bid and construction began in the fall of 2021. This project was made possible through a public-private partnership between Floyd County, the City of Rome, and Tread after many years in the planning stages. In August, Emma Wells started as the new Solid Waste Director. Emma came to the county from Keep Rome Floyd Beautiful, and her passion and enthusiasm will be instrumental in promotion and education about the merits of our recycling operations. Two projects completed in 2021 at the recycling center include a latex paint bunker and a cardboard collection bunker. Splotch funds were used to procure a street sweeper for Public Works. This sweeper will be used to support airport events, as well as MPDS stormwater programs and normal street sweeping operations. Another project completed in 2021 was the Brave Stadium Terrace Upgrades, Suite Upgrades, and Gate Six Upgrade.
The Superior Court had a very busy schedule during 2021 as judges addressed the backlog of cases which accumulated during the period when jury trials were suspended. Thanks to the availability of the forum, they were able to resume jury trials beginning in March 2021. Since that time, the four judges have conducted approximately 50 jury trials, and together with the District Attorney's Office and the Public Defender's Office and the Defense Bar, they have completed thousands of cases. The Drug Court and Mental Health Courts remain active in addressing their particular needs and circumstances of their programs. In particular, the Drug Court grew to its highest participation since it began, and the Mental Health Court had two additional graduation ceremonies.
Hi, I'm Steve Holstein, Utilities Administrator of Floyd County Water Department. In 2021, we initiated the Biddy Well Road Project, located in the southern part of Floyd County. The test well was drilled and testing is complete. The new source will increase our system capacity for future growth in the area and relieve the existing sources during high demand. The DOT widening plan for Highway 293 requires the relocation of one of our water mains to avoid conflict. We've submitted our plans to move the main outside of their construction area. This action will minimize the disruption to our water system during the project. In 2021, Floyd County Water Department developed a plan to replace six miles of existing PVC main along Highway 53 with 12-inch ductile iron pipe. This will support the growing demand along the Highway 53 corridor. We're currently working on the first phase that includes replacing one mile.
2021 was a challenging year, but significant progress was made in organizational structure, employee advancement, splotch, economic development, and most importantly, operating within our approved budgets. I am extremely proud of our county staff, department heads, and elected officials. I would also like to thank the Board of Commissioners for their leadership and guidance in making 2021 a productive and successful year.
Hard copy will follow. Again, we did this in video format so we can put it on our website. Obviously, we want as many folks as possible to see what we did, but it's hard to wrap 28 departments and 31 joint agreements into a 10-minute video. We do that again to compress it for time. But thank you for your support this year, and we look forward to positive and prosperous 2022. I think I can say from this commission, we're extremely proud of our leadership. It was a very difficult year, very trying in many ways, and I'm proud of the way we came through it and the things that you did. And I think, even though some of you could use a little beautification, I liked your video presentation. We have no first readings tonight. We have three second readings and public hearings. I'll ask Bryce Woods to come forward and present those from the Planning Commission. And I'd like to remind you all of how we work our public hearings. Bryce will present each case before the group and give us a recommendation, not a recommendation, but a results of how the Planning Commission voted to recommend these different items. We'll then open the public hearing, and each side, for or against, will have 10 minutes, and that's cumulative time. So if there's several of you that want to speak, if you divide your time up appropriately, we would appreciate that. After the public hearing is closed, we will leave all further discussion up to the commission, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxi, who is our representative on the Planning Commission, to make a recommendation to us to vote on. So Bryce, if you'd lead off with number one.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The first case for tonight is Z22-03-01, which requests rezoning from community commercial to suburban residential for the property located at 66 Old School Road, Floyd County Tax Parcel J12X048. Applicant owner Federico Corral. This is the property outlined in red. It's right behind the racetrack gas station. The applicant owner discovered that his property was owned in community commercial. He had tried to obtain a building permit to add an additional bedroom onto his house and was unfortunately denied, temporarily at least. This is the zoning map for the area. You have multiple houses there that are zoned in community commercial and multiple duplexes across the street. This is looking into the parcel. The proposed addition would be on the right, so he has plenty of space to do it and not interfere with the setbacks. This is directly across the street. This is the staff report, the application. And this does come with a recommendation of approval from the staff, as well as a unanimous approval from the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing, and I'd like for anyone here who is speaking in favor of this proposal, please come forward, give us your name, your address, and you'll have up to 10 minutes to speak. Seeing and hearing none, is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxi for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the first recommendation. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next application is Z22-03-02, which requests rezoning from suburban residential to community commercial for the properties located at Zero Alabama Highway, Floyd County Tax Parcels F13Y148, F13Y149, and F13Y150. Applicant owner Martha Benton. I did want to note, the agenda only lists one of those parcel numbers if it matters to y'all. These are the three parcels. The one on the right is most commonly known as Martha Skillet. The one in the center is vacant. And the one to the left, I believe it's Credit Union. They've been zoned suburban residential since the county adopted zoning in 2001. This is the zoning map for the area. It's my understanding there are no proposed changes for the area. These are pictures looking across the street, further out towards Alabama, back towards Rome. This is the staff report, the application. Picture or map submitted by the applicant. And this does come with a staff recommendation of approval, as well as a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Bryce. Is anyone here who would like, will open the public hearing, is anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this proposal?
Hi, I'm Martha Benton. I own this property. I've been there since 1985. My father-in-law had Benton Builders there in the 50s. And when I went to sell it, because I retired, I came across that. So that's the reason for the rezoning.
Thank you very much. Are there others who would like to speak in favor? If not, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioner Maxi for a motion.
I've had many good meals at this.
Yes.
A lot of people are sad you retired.
Me too.
Can we adjudge to the closing?
Second.
Well, with the stipulation that the meals continue in some form, the motion, the motion is to approve by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The last one we have for you is Z22-03-06, which requests rezoning from suburban residential to agricultural residential for the property located at 45 Battle Farm Road. The property split from Floyd County Tax Parcel J10Y110, as shown on the provided plat. Applicant owner Bobby Ferguson. So this is the property before it was split. You're going to see the plat here in a second. It's now about 25 acres in size. It is currently zoned suburban residential at the backside of Battle Farm subdivision. There is agricultural residential to the north. That's Berry Property. This is looking into the property, looking back into Battle Farm. Staff report. Staff did put some limitations on it, including a buffer between the neighborhood and the proposed hobby farm. And I'll read those to you here in a second. This is the application itself. This was provided by the applicant. I'll let him discuss it if he wants to. This is the plat of how the parcel looks now on our maps. I believe he's got multiple letters from the neighbors. As I said, this does come with a recommendation of approval from staff with a couple of conditions, and they are, let's see, the parcel rezoned to AR must be limited to a small family farm. Commercial farming shall be prohibited. Farm activities, structures, and animals must be limited to the northernmost portion of the property with a 50-foot buffer, as shown on the map below, to avoid disturbance. Area for animals must be fenced. And this does come with that recommendation of approval of conditions from staff and approval from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Bryce. We'll open the public hearing. Are there those who would like to speak in favor?
Bobby Ferguson, 14-hitch post. Just looking to give my family a chance to have like a small farm, nothing big. Discussed it with the neighbors that it affects directly, plus several in the neighborhood. They all support it in lieu of like a more development in the neighborhood. So nothing big, no commercial farm or anything like that. Just trying to give a neighborhood with a little bit of land. So best of both worlds.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? If not, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxi for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions, the three conditions that was listed, and add it as a single family home instead of just a small farm.
Okay.
Second.
Family farm.
Right.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Waters with an important stipulation there in item one of the, of the conditions that it be limited to a single farm, family farm. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Bryce, if you have a minute to stick around, I have a question I need to ask you after the meeting.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight and no resolutions. We do have some other business to come beforehand. If you're here for one of the things that's already been completed and would like to slip out, feel free to do so. Is there, we have several appointments, if you have a copy of the agenda in front of you, that are coming up that are very important to the county. And we hope to have some recommendations at our next meeting for the commission to consider on placing those. But I'd like to remind you that we are constantly in solicitation of citizens that are willing to serve on our different committees. So if you would be interested in that, we'd ask you to go to the website or come by the clerk's office and fill out a volunteer form. We hope to do that at our next meeting. Are there any reports, anyone from the commission would like to make on your committee assignments or appointments? Seeing none, we will move on to Mr. Manager. Do you have anything further?
No, sir. No report.
Ms. Harmon?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda, Ms. Elrod, is it in order?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on approval of the consent?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Second.
Either.
Second, either motion or second.
I got a motion by one of the women, a second by the other one of the women, so we appreciate that.
We'd really like the consent agenda.
And the motion is to approve the consent agenda. If you please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have several items that are pretty important under new business tonight, and we'd ask our manager to lead us in that discussion.
Yes, sir. Item one, consider request from purchasing to approve purchase of 12-vehicle laptops from Law &amp; Order Technologies in amount of $52,509, 10 laptops for SC Floyd County Sheriff's Office, and two for Floyd County PD. Five were budgeted in 2017 Splotch, five were budgeted in the Sheriff's Equipment Funds, and two were budgeted with police grant funds.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on item one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item one. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, consider request from Sheriff's Office to purchase the Sheriff App using ICS Technology Funds. The initial cost is $18,811 for development and maintenance for the first year, then the annual fee and upkeep will be $89.90 per year. This is a good opportunity for them to connect between the Sheriff's Office, the community, push information, as well as utilize technology within the departmental forces as well. This is a recommendation to approve. This also comes from the ICS funds where no tax funds were utilized.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, consider request from purchasing to approve purchase of four 2022 F-150SSV crew cab pickups or equal from Wade Ford in the amount of $30,990 each, or $123,960 in total for the Sheriff's Office. These were budgeted in 2017 Splotch at $177,200. The remaining $53,240 will be used for upfitting.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item three?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item three. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, consider request from purchasing to approve purchase of one Ford Expedition SUV 4x4 or equal from Wade Ford in the amount of $42,447 for the Sheriff's Office. This was budgeted in 2017 Splotch at $56,300. Remaining funds will be used for upfitting.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item four. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five, consider ratification request of Sheriff's Office to approve a budget transfer of $25,500 from the Repair and Maintenance Budget to Capital for the purchase of a dump kettle, and consider request to ratify purchase of 60-gallon jacketed kettle from Central Restaurant Products in the amount of $25,499 for the kitchen at Floyd County Jail. This was approved earlier in the week. This also is the low bid. There were bids solicited on this.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item five?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve item five. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six, consider request from purchasing to approve purchase of one Freightliner 114SD cabin chassis with a 15-yard tandem dump body or equal from Peach State Truck Center, selecting alternate two in the amount of $146,065 from Public Works, for Public Works. This was budgeted in 2017 Splotch at $150,000. The alternate two did come with a five-year warranty.
Is there a motion on item six?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item seven, consider request from purchasing to purchase items with funds allocated from the ICS Solutions phone contract in the amount of $33,650. The contract was for inmate, the contract for the inmate phones was awarded to ICS Solutions. In the contract, the prisoner was awarded $34,000 for technology items to be purchased.
Is there a motion on item seven?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item seven. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eight, consider request from the Water Department to approve a proposal from Turnip Seed Engineering for the design of the Shannon Water Treatment Plant chemical conversion. Per the reference fee schedule, this is a recommendation from Public Utilities and Transportation. Project's budgeted at $175,000. If it's within or below budget, the fee will be $19,075.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item eight?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item nine, consider request from the Board of Elections to approve a contract with Dominion Voting in the amount of $23,000, not to exceed pending final legal review for LNA support, advanced voting support, additional LNA support, and election week support.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item nine?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item nine. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Maxi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Before, Jamie, before you go into item 10, I'd like to call everybody's attention, if you're following along, there are a tremendous amount of purchases on this, on the agenda tonight. Most of them were paid for by Splotch, which was approved by the Citizenry, and it allowed us to replace and improve much-needed equipment without borrowing any money. So I'd like to thank all of you here in the audience and all the citizens who favor the Splotch promotions, which allows us to do stuff on a pay-as-you-go method without borrowing money, and that's a great thing for our community and our county. Now, back to you, Mr. McCord.
Yes, sir. Item 10, consider request from the Floyd County Board of Elections and Registration to approve an employment contract with James Stevens for the position of election supervisor. His first date, if this is approved, would be April 7, 2022.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on item 10?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve. I would like to read a statement here tonight. As you, if you have noticed, Commissioner Hancock could not be here tonight. He's on a college visit with his, with his son, a very important one, and he asked, even though he can't vote, he wanted to be heard on this particular motion, so I would like to read his statement to you. Says, "Unfortunately, I could not attend tonight's meeting due to my son having a scheduled college visit. I fully support the Election Board's decision to hire James Stevens as the election supervisor. I look forward to continuing our progress in working with the Election Board in the future." That's a statement that I would like to have in the, and Commissioner Hancock would like to have in the minutes, please.